I'm not getting blinded. Okay, before we start tonight, I do want to ask something or make a statement or however it's taken. As we go through the budget process, I know there's areas that are being considered and there will most likely be areas that will be reduced that are near and dear to everyone's heart. Everything that is currently done in the schools is important, or we wouldn't be doing it right now, okay? So, the Board is doing everything it can to meet with teachers, have presentations, come to the school buildings and try and talk and learn as much as we can about what's going on, what the issues are, more what some of the solutions are. So, we're taking the time and trying to do that. The concern I have is that, I know that there's a number of faculty that are going out and rousting the troops, posting Facebook postings, calling parents, trying to get them all here to line up at the podium and tell us why a certain program is great. We know they're all great. The problem is we have limited resources. So, what I'm asking you is, we're putting the time in to try and work with all of you to figure out solutions. It doesn't help when we have to take a bunch of time to listen to the same thing over and over again about that someone has a preference about a program. We know that. That doesn't help us. If you want to work with a group of parents to come up with a solution for something or an alternative way to do something, that's great. We'd love to hear that. But persuading parents to line up at the podium to tell us that their program is special doesn't help anybody. So, I'm asking if we could kind of calm that down a little bit, it would be much appreciated.
Mr. Cerny just at the TA President Night, which I can't think because it's kind of where the union was going.
Go ahead.
Friday, we're going to make an announcement to the staff. They've already had emails to talk to about their programs, just what you said, come up with solutions, try not to throw any other programs under the bus. And that is our concern, and I think the emails that are in this, I've seen them on Facebook as well, were meant to give people here just so that they could see what was going on and be informed more than, I get it, you don't want to hear 10 people lining up about music.
Doesn't help, yeah.
So, just in that, we're not encouraging that. I told my staff, I'm also not going to tell you not to talk to people. We're just hoping to get more parents here so they can be informed as well as the cuts you were making.
And that's perfectly fine.
And I will continue to work that way with the staff as well.
Okay.
Okay there?
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any thoughts or comments?
I mean, also about using the kids. I mean, it's one thing if you want to send something home with the parents for the kid to get to the parent, so the parent can just discuss with their child about their classes, but to utilize the kid to elicit emotion is really not helping them or the kids because they're quite confused about what's coming. And a lot of things are coming back that's not even true, what these teachers are telling these kids, so, and then it gets blown out of proportion and, you know.
If that is happening, I will reiterate that.
Please do. Thank you.
Okay. With that, Mrs. Jefferson asked for 10 minutes to talk about the music department, so please do. I'm not sure. Wherever you want to. It's all up to you. You can stand, you can sit, there's no podium, you can, wherever you're most comfortable.
Thank you. First of all, thanks for letting me come in and talk. I really appreciate having that opportunity, and I understand completely that these are difficult times or difficult, rather than not just. I'm here mostly to explain what happened last year, not to say, please save my program, please save my job, because that's not why, that's not what this is about. So, I want you to understand that. The music department has already experienced some major cuts last year. If you're talking about everything's on the table, we're making cuts across the board, I want you to bear in mind that we had our turn last year, and if you cut us again, it's like cutting us twice and everybody else only once. In 2012, just in time for the current school year, the music department lost a background who fell prolonged, who was retired and was not replaced. As a result, the bands were realigned and lesson groups are combined, and the lesson groups right now are very large, very large at the high school level especially. The elementary orchestra band, an orchestra based before school, which is causing irregular attendance and a loss of teaching rotations there, which makes their lesson groups larger. Elementary course was reduced from 42 minutes to 36 minutes, which affects how much you can get done in a personal time. At the high school level, they lost some deductives partly because of reduced staff who are probably gone and out of place and partly because of scheduling problems. Our supply and budget repair, our supply and repair budget was greatly reduced, not just last year, but over the next three years. That was reduced. So, we've already had some major effects in our department, and few teachers in and just service as many students as the music teachers do. It's just the numbers, because of the numbers in a course and the numbers in a venue, so we touch a lot of us. Elementary level, you see every single student in the school, and at the high school level there are large numbers, and so if we continue to cut the music department as indicated in our budget proposal, it will gradually over time, as these elementary kids get to the high school, degrade the overall program, and we will no longer have a music program that is, as I'm quoting currently from our school website, a music program that has consistently received county and state recognition. We have, until now, had that, as we lose time with the kids, as we lose fourth grade lessons starting, if that's still on the table. That affects the total program, which affects your results with your high schoolers, because they're coming to high school with less background knowledge, and it's going to affect the total result. The arts are not thrills. Music, all the arts, but I'm speaking about music, supports every curricular area. We support reading, writing, listening, math, science, history, language. We practice skills such as communications, teamwork, studies, self-control, planning, preparation, performance in front of an audience, skills specifically that employers are looking for in their employees when they're hiring. If we want our students to be college and career writing, don't leave out the arts because they are promoting and practicing skills that employers are looking for. Not just employers who are looking for a music person. I have a nephew who was a music major and is now a lawyer. He had no trouble getting into orchestra, having a degree in vocal performance. He had no trouble at all. It was an advantage because he was used to standing up in front of people. So, those are just some thoughts that I have. There are many statistics. There's a study that was done that I can pass this around if you're interested, and show that all of the areas of the arts and the advantages that they have, increasing SAT scores and variety of other things. We have some data about all the schools in Erie County. Every single school on this list starts instrument lessons in fourth grade. Two of the schools that used to start in fifth grade are now starting in fourth grade. If we're interested in being top 10, we should be looking at what the top 10 schools are doing and if they are starting in fourth grade. So, that's what I wanted to share with you. And I do have copies of this that you're interested in.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'm just wondering if I could see the list of the Erie County schools that are offering lessons in fourth grade.
Yes. The first page is specifically band, the second page is specifically orchestra, but basically they all, all the way down to the fourth grade.
Thank you.
From last year.
Okay. You had mentioned the size of the instrumental instruction groups. Can you provide us a list of all the sections of instruction and what instrument and how many students are in each one for all of the grades, all the groups?
I don't have a road map.
No, no, not, I know. No, can you send that, can you send that out to us?
Sure. Sometimes when people look at that, it can look deceiving because in a band, you might only have one or two tuba players, and you have 15 piano players. Why does that group only have two tuba? Because they play tuba and they're only two tuba players. It can't be clear the same things as you teach a piano. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No. Okay. Thank you.
School bands, 46. It doesn't break any car.
Okay. Where's the, what, YouTube?
Ready to go through budget again?
Same topic. Like we just did this.
Yep. And I just updated these couple slides showing the revenue and expenses. In draft three, the only change that was made from draft two to draft three is a reduction of $50,000 for the scoreboards.
That's the only thing you factored in?
Yep. And I also showed, using the repair reserve, $41,000 for the pro-gen project and the $10,000 for the scoreboard. Okay. So, that brings the unfunded deficit down to $184,000, assuming.
Should we use it in the budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this again just shows your revenues, your fund balances, and how they're changing. Next in your budget book, you should have the revenue status report. I don't know how we get to get a full page display. You know, this just shows the budgeted revenue over the last couple of years as well as the last two years of budget, our estimates. Just so you have that. And I know you haven't had a chance to look at anything because I was late getting things done.
Yeah, it's okay. All right.
Okay. After the revenue, we have the budget draft. I think this is what you were asking for, the breakdown like this?
Which one is that?
It would be the expenses, the detailed appropriation report by function.
By function. That suits you. Take it through the, at least the headings. I'm not sure if I know what you have here.
Okay. The account is just the budget code. Description is what it is. We're showing the 10-11 budget numbers and the 10-11 expenses, the 11-12 budget numbers, the 11-12 expenses, the current year budget, the draft three budget, and the difference between the two budgets and the percent change.
Okay.
Okay.
Funny place, are there big differences? Is it all, are there rotations somewhere?
No, not here. I'd have to look in the detailed budget notes.
Yes, I mean, so, since we won't be seeing you no longer, Lorraine, she has access to those notes so she can tell what.
She absolutely will.
So, it's all documented.
Yeah, and I printed it out for her and.
So, we don't, we don't have 12-13 budget versus actual?
No, because we, you know, we haven't spent everything yet.
Right.
It's going to give you two additional columns, plus then I do another column as to additional expenses that we anticipate. It would definitely not fit here.
So, it takes some time to go through yourself. Any questions right now? Anyone have any questions you want to ask right now?
And this is showing a 5.89 overall percent increase from budget to budget, from 11 to, or from 12-13 to 13-14.
What was that percentage?
Some of the huge increases or changes in salaries.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, that's because I was asked to move it from a general salary code per building. Everything was lumped together there. They asked me to move it to a department or grade level.
Oh, okay. Who asked you to?
Mr. Cerny.
Okay.
And it'll give you a better handle on costs.
Oh, yeah. State or federal mandate, did you do it that way?
We tried to track the cost closer to the, to the buildings or the cost center so you can see, versus just one big line. Now, I'm going to have to log through this. Any other questions for now?
And again, again, Lorraine will have all this and should be able to get you the detail.
She'll ask for lots of questions.
And then, last but not least, what I have is our administrative budget recommendations. We've changed some things from the last time. We filled in some costs that we were able to.
So, this is this?
Yep. Mr. Schaefer, if you want to take it away?
I was wondering if you just wanted. The top heading is, everybody has it, it's 2013 budget recommendations, and it was the latest version of this, draft three, today's date on the 2/27. You see, we did take off increasing the tax levy to include, well, exclusions. So, we took that off, so that's not built in anymore. Charge for facilities. We did an interesting look at facilities.
Did you see, did you get some update?
Oh, we got something. This is, this was based on the 10-11 school year, but given the time we had to work on it, I think it's still a pretty good indication of what we've got. And if you look at the groups that use the school facilities, and if you scan across what are, whether they use a classroom, whether they use the gym, whether they use the pool, and a perceived total amount of cost of amusing that area, whether it's heat, electricity, whether it's just cleaning, upkeep, whatever. This was where this 91,215,000 figure came from, but as we looked at this, we, it was me. As I looked at this, it became clear that they really fell into four categories. There were groups, adult groups that use the building, the buildings through Eden Recreation. Now, I can tell you, in most school districts, it's not through Eden Recreation or it's Town Recreation, it's through continuing ed. And Mrs. Thomasoule and I are looking at this as a possible way of building it into continuing ed, so it could be a source of revenue for adults who use the facilities on a regular basis, like every Wednesday night to play basketball, for example. Cover the cost of insurance, cover the cost of the heat, the electricity, everything. There was another group, there were actually three other groups that have been using the facilities for so long, they don't fall under Eden Recreation, they don't fall under anything. They just, for lack of a better term, they were grandfathered in. They could be brought under the umbrella also of continuing ed, and there could be a by semester usage fee per person, which could generate some money. A third group is typically youth, and they would be, in that group, you would have the Boys and Girls Club, Town Recreation, mostly for the summer recreation program, the wrestlers, the town wrestling program, the Little Loop Cheerleaders, and for older kids, Eden Volleyball, Eden Volleyball Club run by Robert Pierce. The Dolphins, huge group. As you look up at the top of the list, probably the most expensive square footage to maintain for the district is the pool, and they use it five, six days a week, virtually the entire school year. This would be, this is one the Board would have to ponder. How do, they're mostly, mostly our students. Not all of them, but mostly our students. Boys and Girls Club, we are in partnership with them, and they are virtually all of our students. Town Rec, mostly our students. Wrestling, mostly our students, but not all. You'd have to, with the volleyball with the older guys to make these competitive teams, students do come in from other school districts to play. Have to make, I guess, some philosophical decision there on what you would want to do with that. There's a fourth group in here, and these are people who I think have come to use Eden facilities because they don't cost anything. And if they have one Eden resident in the group, or two Eden residents in the group, that might be a lot. They're not very common, and I'm going to use, and believe me, don't want to cast aspersions on them, the Hamburg Breakers, great softball organization, but there might be one or two Eden kids in the group, and the rest of the team is from all over the south towns virtually. So, these are, these are the four areas we found this fit into. We found that, like I said, the adult recreation and the three groups that have been grandfathered, those are the groups that we're looking at, and Mrs. Thomasoule is working on this, on the possibility of moving them into the continuing education program, which would be a source of revenue for the school district. But don't, let's not kid ourselves, it's not going to be $91,000. So, if that's something the Board is interested in, we'll pursue that a little more and show you how that would, what it would look like.
You're listing for, just says Town Recreation, what is that? Is that the town summer program?
It was a line that was a space holder there. We don't know what it was. It could be the concerts on the front steps. It could be the night they do a sign up for recreation, it could be anything, but more telling is, is you go down a little farther, the next line where it says Town Recreation, and I'm guessing that's virtually the entire summer program. And then they have a Friday night swim program for, for adults, adult lap swim, is it?
Friday night family swim.
Friday night family swim. Yeah.
And none of these groups pay anything at this point?
No.
Absolutely.
Well, that's a good point, Mrs. Thomasoule. Some of these groups have fees that they pay to their organization to be a member of the organization, which may cover travel and other things.
Do we know any other districts around us, are they charging?
I would say.
Many are, most.
Most are.
So, maybe we want to see what policies, maybe they, some of the neighbor districts know what they do.
I know, I gave that to Rand Boggs several years ago, I think when we did this in 10-11.
A list of policies for the.
A list of what other districts charge.
I don't know if that's around anymore still.
I'm sure it is.
All right. So, you want us to look into this a little more?
Yeah, it sounds viable. I mean, there's probably a line here somewhere, I would think, to be drawn. I mean, obviously, something like Town Recreation where it's just going to go back, all you're doing is moving the money to build in the town.
Yeah, that's.
It's just shoveling and shoving around.
Exactly.
It doesn't make much sense. But yeah, if there's a lot of out of the town groups, I mean, even the Wednesday basketball group, I play in that every now and then. Most of the people in that group don't live in.
Which, to participate in a continued education program is fine.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they need a place to play, and that's fine.
I would think those would be the easiest call, the adult groups, yeah.
They are, no question. And, and the Breakers, organizations like that, that's pretty easy. The harder calls are Eden youth from other non-for-profits.
Where's the sign up when, when someone's interested in using the facility? Who do they call?
Each one of the buildings has a building use forms, and part of it is also submitting insurance. There's a million dollar umbrella of insurance. So, usually you're working through an organization like the Boys and Girls Club, Town Recreation, if you are, first volleyball is part of, part of the United States Volleyball Association.
Yeah, let's, let's see if we take a look at that and see if that helps us figure out if we need to have more. We weren't going to like working on this.
All right.
Good, thank you.
As you continue to scan down here, there's been no change to the K through two, the addition of the one teacher. The Board wanted to take off, off the recommendations, the possibility, any possibility of alternating art and music in first and second grade. So, we did that. You see where that, there was that special ed teacher that might be needed at GLP, the halftime? That was somewhere else in last report, but it was moved here. I think that was requested that we move it here. And grades three through six.
But that, sorry, but that's a special ed teacher, needs to be.
Yes. Mrs. Johnson, you had some questions, and we have a whole bunch of questions to answer over here. As, there were some questions about certifications, and what certifications are needed for certain things, particularly as you get into secondary subjects. So, Mrs. Johnson's here, and she's prepared to answer that when we get to that, get to the high school. Grade three through six, replace the one full-time equivalent elementary teacher, Mrs. Noak's position actually, and special ed reading.
That should have been at the high school.
Should have been at the high school, at the high school.
Yeah. In my haste.
Okay. We still have in here the two options with gifted talented. We still in here, have in here the options of alternating third and fourth grade, art and music by semester, fifth and sixth grade, art and music by semester, and deleting band orchestra lesson instructions, grade four. In the report over here, somebody asked me to take a look at what schools, where schools teach musical instruments, and I used the elementary email serve list, and virtually every school district that answered said fourth grade. Yes. One, one mentioned they were looking at the possibility of going to fifth because of budget things. And some school districts mentioned they started chorus a year earlier. But overwhelmingly, everybody said they started in fourth grade.
Good, all right, thank you.
Grades seven through 12, the need for librarian, library services up here with the retirement of Mr. Kibler, and/or a library aide for when that part-time librarian's not there. Go into the next page.
Or create.
The part-time special ed math teacher at the high school, and this would be a good time if Mrs. Johnson. Who had the question about the special education certification at the secondary level? Was that you, Mr. Cerny?
I don't know if it was a certification question, it was just a question about what you needed, and I thought it was, I thought the way you explained that was, those three special ed listings you had there were just backfills for you. If those, if the people that were helping you out special ed now went to help with regular AIS and other buildings, is that correct?
What it was is that that teacher that was providing the specialized support was doing AIS the rest of that.
Right.
And the thought was that that teacher was just for all AIS, then I would lose that one period.
Right.
Mr. Graff and I said we're able to work it out, so, it depends on all the other things that are going to happen.
But the point is, it's, it's not that you're picking up, say, in the GLP, it's not that you need another half FTE for special ed there. What you need.
He talked about the high school. Right, he talked about the high school.
It does list as GLP here.
There's one back on the front. It says, let's see, GLP, add point five FTE, special ed teacher at GLP.
That was intertwined with the reading position at the high school. And it was three, it was almost scenario, this happened, that happened, that happened.
Okay.
Okay, so that was it. And so, that was why it was put up here. The point one eight, which I didn't think it was, but this one period of AIS that I knew that died.
If you lost a person that's doing it now.
Right. And we don't know that. That's what we're saying, because of the scores and all that, so that's why.
And the reason you're losing that person is because they may go off and do non-special ed stuff somewhere else.
Absolutely, right.
So, it's, it's a budget add to the somewhere else. So it's, it's a budget add to the somewhere else, is what that is.
Right.
Okay. That was my question, so that's, so as long as we have those in the right places and wherever really, so it's really not, when it, when it says add a half FTE to special ed teacher GLP, it's really add a half of FTE for AIS.
Right.
GLP.
It, it is, because I have a teacher at the elementary, I need that pool, and she's, because she's doing AIS the other time.
Right.
So it really is AIS, GLP is not.
I thought the GLP wasn't a compliance, that's why you needed another halftime.
It's not a compliance right now, now, if someone wants to help me now, we can do that, it's not now. And, and what I would say to Mr. Carter, we don't know what's going to come in the special ed, we know that.
Right.
Every year we're increasing, increasing, our numbers are rising. So we put it in there because I really do need a .5 special ed teacher.
Special ed teacher.
If I'm going to tell you exactly where it's going to be?
Okay.
We're out of compliance right now, GLP, because I need so many move in, just like you're dealing with with backside, you know, yeah.
I'm pretty confused.
The hard part with special ed is you can only get five kids in a resource.
So that's the compliance issue, where there's too many students in-
I gotta be honest, I'm not following.
It'll, it'll get clearer as we get.
It'll get clear, you promised that.
Clear as much?
Not tonight.
I'm sorry, as long as it's better.
It, it'll get clearer as we get.
I can live with that.
Okay.
Let that go.
The, we're, we're still in grade 7 through 12, and these are more of the FTE reductions by department. Mr. Graff was asked to put together a, a look at each department, how many sections we currently have. It's, it's in, it's in your, it's in your papers. It's, it's called a proposed section consolidation slash elimination. And so he's looking at the current number of sections, for instance, in ceramics, there's three sections, look at, looking at consolidating to two, resulting in the cut of one section, and on and on. He's also proposed in, a little more of a trim, I think, in, I believe it was in English, it's in the red, well, actually, it's in several places. He puts in there in red, courses in red below are additional low count electives that could be considered for consolidation elimination. It's the equivalent of 1.08 FTE. Are your copies in color? See that?
Yes.
Okay. And you didn't move those into this, this-
No.
Yeah, okay. So that's not in this, this third gap reduction.
This supports in literature?
The red is not in the-
This additional 1.08 is not yet in this-
Okay.
Budget gap reduction.
Much more red, okay, so.
in the budget book, someone asked, how many students participate in each one of the after-school activities, the musicals, various clubs, activities. It's right in the budget book, and I believe it's on page 47. Make that 43, it starts with the junior, senior high school musical, then elementary musical, and then it goes through some of the other clubs on page 45, 46. 40?
40.
Starts on 40?
Yeah.
Well, 40 sports, is it sports?
Yeah. Oh, you just might have done-
Yeah, they, it was just the guy, the extra class, yes.
So Lisa, just a different question, the way you've written this is, everything on this page is kind of a working possibilities, and it has not dialed in to-
Oh, it, no.
Other numbers.
No.
So when you dial it in, you're there, you take it off to here.
Right.
Okay.
And I'll note it, like I did with these four boards.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
And the other things you added off the table, I put in a, just so we knew there was a number there at one point.
Ready to move on?
Sure.
Athletics, eliminating the 5 o'clock bus run, which is also elimination in transportation, estimated at $20,000 right now. And eliminating modified sports is still on the table at 48,186. We removed from the possible, from the, from the mix JV sports, modified sports.
JV and varsity.
I'm sorry, JV and varsity.
And the athletic trainer.
I thought we decided to leave the athletic trainer in, am I mistaken?
No, we did.
Pardon?
We did decide to leave it in.
Okay, so yeah, the trainer has to go back.
That is an option? I thought we said we weren't-
Yeah, I hit it across it out.
I think we're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
It is. Yes, it is off the table.
The main next year, when we elevate.
Yeah.
Okay. So add in the trainer.
Oh, good, it's good there.
These needs appropriate, that's correct.
Oh, you're, alright, yes, yes, I get you. We're not taking out the trainer.
Right. And it's off the table.
I got you. Still much more to be done with the single bus run thing, but one of the things was decided that, continue to look at, that we're working on the, what policy changes would be required to take away 7-12 bus transportation in the Weller subdivision on School View. We already do a generalized pickup on Route 62, and we were looking at the numbers on the 4 o'clock bus and found them to be typically pretty low.
It's alright, yeah.
And the 4 o'clock bus is $7,900 for the year, Mrs. Thomas.
Right. Which schools use the 4 o'clock buses at elementary?
All of them.
Yep.
Well, not GLP.
Right.
Eden Elementary will have its few clubs that it has on Tuesdays and or Thursdays, detention Thursdays, and the high school has their clubs, I mean, on Tuesday or Thursday. So.
So right now, that's Tuesday a week, Tuesday, Thursday?
Yeah, it's a Tuesday, Thursday. And of course, if there's a 20% reduction in some of the extracurriculars.
Yeah. Okay.
Building grounds, we've reduced, we're going to be reducing a cleaner at Eden Elementary six hours a week.
I think everyone agreed last time that that was, go ahead, put that through, right? If everyone was okay with putting that one through last time, so that can move to the okay list.
Okay.
And there are any others on here that we said you're okay with last time.
The 5-10 bus run.
Yeah, I think we said 5-10.
That's not on here.
Yeah, it's on there. First one under athletics.
Always on athletics, okay, that's looking at the bus run.
The last 5 p.m. bus run.
It'd be in the transportation, not athletics. So both, the 5, but not the 4 yet?
Um, I'm okay with 4, I mean, that, that's, I would say that's up to, the students would know better about what, what the need is, if you don't think you can use it, I'm okay with it. I mean, I don't, I don't know enough about it.
Well, so, so does that eliminate all after-school bus runs? Is that, are those the only ones we have?
That would eliminate all after-school bus runs. We could, we could leave it and wait to see how things work out as we finish going through the budget.
Yeah.
We could put a hold on it.
I would put a hold on it.
Are you still counting numbers on the one bus run idea?
Yes.
Alright. And is, is one of the issues whether we would have to purchase a bunch of new buses to facilitate?
That's part of it. Part of it is, I think we passed out last time, that it would require an increase in the fleet, an increase in the number of drivers, and then there's, the savings really would be in, if there was a savings, in driver time, but the one sheet we had showed that it wasn't really significant, the difference in time.
Will Rose come to the March 18 being, and take us through all that analysis she did?
We can do that. Let's write that down.
I'm wondering too, if the, if the runs, if, if we've taken into consideration the buses that we're not using, the spare, I think we've got one, now, five spares, or, they were already in there and we still needed additions to the fleet?
Well, it was, it was shown in there that, you know, you need to have a couple spares just in case, and so to increase the fleet and still have a couple spares is, would be the plan.
Would going to one of the private contractors for the overflow, let's say it's seven or eight buses, and throwing those into the mix, maybe we should price that as well? In other words, our fleet could handle 80 or 90%.
Let's check, there may be some contract implications for that.
I know some districts use a combination of their own fleet and the private contractor.
Right, I know some that they use their, use leased fleet, but use their own drivers, and they put them specifically on the longer runs because they're beating up, beating up their vehicles on the longer run, so they take advantage of that.
Right.
For the leased bus, but yet they're using their own driver, so I think that must be an option.
So Mrs. Hacketthorne at the March 18 board event meeting? And the next page was just, showed you various summations, depending on what variations of replacing the librarian at the high school, reductions or deletion to the GT program.
And then the budget surplus with these changes, or potential budget surplus.
So the best we do is, I read this right, 233?
No, it'd be a-
33,000 in motion?
Yep. That's with everything on the list now, but you want certain things in, yeah, that's with everything on the list now, all the additions and deletions.
Yeah, the other thing we should think, I was looking at some of the reserve numbers and all of that, and where we're at for next year, but we talked about, we're, we should give a preliminary number back in the fall or Christmas time or something, we're looking at about a 500,000 with reserves, delta, and-
Yeah, that's before we had fund balance projections.
Before we got that, and then else, so, but now it's like 230. But if, and I think instructions, meeting or two ago, we asked if you could see if you can get us to 500. I still think we want to try and look how to get to the 500, because it does a couple things, or one primary thing, it gets us through this year and next year.
Uh huh.
So I, I get everybody else's opinion on that, but I still think if we can shoot for 500,000 this year and save some of those reserves, that'll help us for next year, because we lower the cost base operating this year and for next year. And then we don't have to fight or, fight with this as much next year. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Uh huh.
Questions about that?
I still want to see what else is out there that we can put on the menu.
Yeah, I agree.
Before I would commit to something like that.
Well, this would-
Well, that's what-
Yeah, I mean, it makes- It's basically the same thing, because we have to see more things to even get to 500, this is only getting us to 230,000.
Right. I guess in theory it makes sense, but it, the proof is in the pudding, I mean, I gotta, we gotta see what we're talking about.
Right. I think we're asking the same thing, Colin, what I'm saying is, we need to shoot higher, so we need to see more things out there. Typically, if you want to get 500,000, you need to put options of like 700 or 800 or a million dollars worth of things on there. If we want to get to 270,000 or 80,000, we need to see almost twice that, that's options, or things to select, which is what you're saying, we'd like to see some more, more things put at the table, right? With consideration.
Right.
Yeah. So either way, I think we need to see something that's more 500 to 700,000 range of options that we can start picking from and feel like we have the choices, because right, right now, these are all not options. To just get to, close to a number, we'd have to do it, so it's not, they're not options. So we need to have some things on this list that are closer to 500 to 700,000, to, to give us some choice.
Right.
Does that make sense?
And some of these things we've, I mean, we've added, we've added, we've retained the, the elementary teacher and, and the GLP teacher, so that's 130, that has to come from someplace else.
Right. Yeah, so we can plug the hole a little deeper by doing that, it's important to do that, but we'll plug the hole deeper.
Right.
And there were other things that we, we also took off the list, like varsity sports, for example, that would get us closer to that 700, not, I'm saying put varsity sports on, I'm just giving an example.
That's true.
That we probably had been way past 700,000 at one point in time.
Right.
Well, we were up to 16, last time, 619,000 dollars in reductions.
I think we need to look some others, I think we need to look at, again, there's still not much on your administration costs, if anything, quality support we need to look at. I think Mr. Graff did a nice job of going a little further on the high school, you know. I spent some time looking at the class size in the high school, and it keeps striking me that's 60 classes with less than 10?
12.
12. I think there's, there's still an opportunity there. If, if we're wanting to, to decrease our class size in the lower grades and invest in that, the money's got to come from somewhere. It's probably not the best place to spend our money on very small class sizes for that many different classes in high school, so I guess Mr. Graff has found some of those areas he thinks is possible, but I'd like, I'd like to maybe see, including what he's got here, to come through and see what it'd look like to have, where to reductions in each, each area in the high school. Let's just see what that looks like and what the implications would be of that, because that's, that's where there's an awful lot of money tied up in those places with those smaller class sizes. Do you think that's something to look at?
Yeah.
Any thoughts about that?
Steve, how many kids are in the regular classes?
Which regular classes?
What's the count on the regular classes, the regular math class?
In the budget book, it pretty much-
Every, every class is listed in there.
It's every class is listed in there, on about-
Average 20, 25?
No. I think that, we say regular class, I'm not sure what you mean, there's not exactly a regular class.
You mean a required course, as opposed to an elective?
Not an elective, a required course.
Required course.
If you're English and math, do they have an average of 20?
Okay, I just picked one, English 11, we have 18, global studies 2, 17. There's also a class with 20.
Those are not AP classes, is that right?
I'm not seeing AP.
Those are regular required classes.
We have World History AP.
You know, one of the reasons why they put semestering in was to give the kids an advantage, like a feel for college. I mean, there's 400 kids in a college class, why can't those be doubled up at all, or? I don't know, I'm, I'm just-
I don't know what the answer is, but I think where you're going is the same thing I just stated, is that we have a lot of small class sizes in the high school, we need to look at better utilization there, I think.
If you look on page 50, Mrs. Hendrix, the high school- If you look on page fifty, Mrs. Henry, the high school faculty and staff are listed there alphabetically. And uh, from there it gets into, I think the next section is the elementary.
Okay.
And then at last, the GLP. Now, it's, you know, it's more cut and dried when you have an elementary school class because the homeroom teacher typically is the teacher for all the subjects. But uh, that'll give you a pretty good indication. But I will give Mr. Graff that information.
And if he has any questions, you can call me, I'll, I'll tell him what I was thinking there. But I think we need to look at that, that's just um, you know, we have-
Would you welcome educators' information from years of educational training and value?
That's what Mr. Graff is supposed to represent. So we would ask Mr. Graff to, I mean, if you have concerns, you should work through with Mr. Graff on that.
Just the counter about college, by the time you get in, you're in a very competitive department. You're down to maybe fifty. And then they're in smaller groups. So they beat you out when you're in two hundred and fifty, and then you're the base group and the competitive. And, and that's really not what high schools are for. And fifteen is the magic number. Once you get over fifteen, all the kids in home do not learn as well. Once you get over fifteen. You have to see an educational, not a college, in class. Maybe you're-
All right.
I'm wondering if we know, along those lines, if we know what a standard class size is in some of our other neighboring districts at the high school level.
Be interested too, to see what electives the other schools around in their district offer. I mean, I don't know how many electives we offer here in Eden.
Looks like a lot.
It's a lot, you look, I mean-
Do you want to look in other neighboring districts, or do you want the top ten and top five?
Yeah, that would be good, yeah.
Let's look at the top ten again, that's our, that's the group of-
That's our goal, so it'd be nice to see if we're matching up from an elective perspective and, and such.
Oh, the other thing, if we could ask Mr. Graff, would we get the um, course descriptions?
Yes. Thank you.
And which are, I mean, it'd be nice to know too, which are mandatory, you know, by state required that, you know?
That is listed here.
Is that listed?
It is, regardless of elective. Done that thing.
Oh, required and elective, okay. So there's not electives that are required?
If any, what's that?
Well, yes.
There's not specific, there's a, there's a number you have to get, but not specific requirements.
Oh, okay.
Now, for anybody on the board, if you want a copy of this, I have the spreadsheet for the, behind this. And I've set it up with filters and things, so you can go through and look at different combinations if anybody wants to look at that, or go through that with me.
There's electives that are required by the state.
But, but assuming they're listed as required on this budget book, then?
What I meant is, there's electives such as DDP, music and lawyers, um, two departments that are required. Once you sign up for it, they have to be on the list. The state mandated, um, pressures for parts and other subjects have the same.
Okay, but, but my question would then be is, is it listed as required in this booklet?
We didn't put it together.
Huh?
We didn't put it together.
Okay.
We had no info on that book. We don't have much time for it.
Okay. Then I suggest you, we could go with Mr. Graff and get a copy and take a look at it.
In addition to your course subjects, you need other credits for graduation. So you do need some electives for graduation, in addition to the course subjects.
Okay.
So, so far I got, you wanted Mr. Graff to look at uh, one to two FTE reductions per department at the high school, class size in the top ten schools in Western New York, electives in the top ten schools in Western New York, and course descriptions for our courses.
And a better understanding of what's required versus elective, what's elective that's required. You know, if there's three electives, pick anything you want, that would be helpful to know.
Okay.
Studio and art is listed as a required course in here.
Yep.
All right, so we kind of know where we stand.
We have uh, some other handouts in your packet too. Someone had asked about organizational dues that were paid.
Oh yeah, I did.
And I think-
I emailed them, but we also had printout, so I stuck them in here.
I lost it in my paper.
These kind of look like this.
Were those those?
Yep.
Lisa, could you maybe do one more thing on this list, and anything that's required by contract indicated? Would that be?
That'd definitely be uh, the administrators, yeah, I can highlight it.
Great.
One dumped on me when I saw this, the Education Service Council, we don't even actually use it for anything, do we?
Um, yeah, I believe conferences and workshops, people attend.
We're a couple of those, twelve hundred and fifty bucks. ACSD?
I'm not quite sure if we do-
ACSD?
Say again?
Associates for Staff Development. They assign all of the, all the titles to us. Learning strategies, curriculum.
Do you use them?
And Steve, in many cases, the dollar amount of dues is specified by the contract and the administrator gets to choose for himself.
Did we get anything for Rural Schools Association?
Uh, no.
Yeah, we could drop that one right now.
Yes, I would agree with that.
I think we could drop the Education Service Council.
Do you guys use like Educational Service Council for anything?
Yeah. Maybe once a while. They're that organization where they offer conferences and they're also that organization, I think that Mr. West would go to, they could do studies for us, and those kinds of things.
And then they charge you more for the studies.
Right.
Yeah.
Over the bulk of it.
Yeah, I, I kind of looked at what they do. I don't think we need to give them twelve hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, and there are others out there that do those same studies.
Although they charge-
They're not the only ones that do those.
This is so that they can charge you again to do the study. This is fifty, just so you can remember.
I know, I know.
There is a consortium, I mean, I could probably find out the legislature's working it. And then they do offer seminars throughout the year, you can go to one of these, um, castle targets, legal issues and stuff.
But almost, our law firms are offering all the same topics and are probably higher quality by the end of the year.
Actually, we haven't gotten anything from um, Judiciary Creston, anything they offer, conferences.
Fair speech.
Fair speech, I was there upstairs.
They send all kinds of, they have all kinds of course offerings, you're right, see if they're sending anything.
No.
Fair speech, we do go to.
Do you go to some of those, yeah?
I was there, but maybe with um, HCC upstairs.
They seem to have a lot of them, so that's good. So I have to take the Education Service Council, rural, rural schools, just because it's hard to say.
For some people.
What do we get for school administrators of New York State?
That's uh, the administrators belong to that organization.
Sanes, right?
Sanes, it uh, it covers legal representation.
Oh.
It's uh, got a lot of staff development offerings for the administrative group. It's required by contract.
And you're contract required, something like that.
Got it.
National Association of Secondary School Administrators?
I believe Mr. Graff has to participate so certain clubs can-
Oh, really?
Do whatever they do. And he can explain that better.
I'm pretty sure UCIC wants their money.
They do.
Public High School Athletic Association, is that something we have to do?
What?
They want to compete, I think.
New York State Public High School Athletic Association?
To participate in state championships and such, yes.
Oh, no.
I believe so.
Yes.
All right, well, take a look and see if there's anything they, they think is uh, worth looking at. We just got, we got two of them. Okay, thank you for that. What else you have?
I just have one comment.
That's my stuff.
Oh, I'm sorry, you want to go first? On Monday night, Barb commented about the fact that the musical brings in revenue. While this is true, this revenue does not go into our general fund. It goes into the club account.
Lisa, can you at this point explain to me, because I really don't know, and I think there's a lot of people don't know, what happens with that money, does it, does it um?
It does not go into the school, they put it in their club account.
In their club account?
And then they, they purchase items for the following year's musical.
Okay. So tell me, are they really, do they really have thirty thousand dollars in their budget? After the ticket sales?
I'm sitting right here, I have a few questions for you.
Great.
On the musical reference, can you say it like the whole thing? I'm sorry, I need to hear the full question.
I, I, I'd love to have it broken down, the money that's used for the musical. Because I really don't, don't understand how much, how much you make. And, and it's a big mystery, the school's paying for all of it, and then you get a ticket, and-
So we can use the future address sale, it's our ticket money based, or goes to things like, for ways for these for history, for example, that we have to purchase.
Could you please write that down, and so everybody can see it, what, what, where it goes? Would you do that?
I, I can copy up the ledger sheets, we can see what that, where it goes.
Could you actually make kind of a profit and loss statement? Here's the revenue sources, boom, boom, boom.
Well, that's supposed to be done anyway through the extra class account, per the auditor's recommendation. So maybe if you showed last year's?
That'd be fine.
But you have to be careful because the musical does not run July one to July one. It runs March to March, it's the only club that does that.
Whatever annual cycle.
It's, it's a matter, if you show us last year's, then it'll show the full cycle.
Yep.
That'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Also in your, your package, uh, Mr. Burns had asked about what school, what administrators are required by law. And uh, there's a couple pages printed out of the school administration law book. Covers a requirement for principals in each building. There was a point, there was a time when the state education department would allow a principal to cover one school in like a small satellite school. That has pretty much been eliminated, as far as I know, certainly here in Western New York. But uh, are your copies highlighted as well?
Yes.
So it's a couple pages. And as I said to some of my colleagues, yes, I suppose you could find a school district in the inner Adirondacks that had three hundred kids, K-12, a building principal and a superintendent, and they were athletic director, business officer.
The town of Wyoming actually has that. They have like two hundred kids and the superintendent is the principal and everything, and the-
I'm pretty sure that's a K-6 school district, and they uh, contract out their high school kids to the neighboring school districts around them.
The point is, we really can't do, there's nothing there to do with that, or, it can't happen.
But that's, it's an interesting concept. Or maybe it's K-8, Mrs. Henry, I'm not sure. So you got that. There was also a question, and it should be in your package here, of what course, other courses Niagara University offers that were possibilities for new step? And uh, what were the possibilities for ECC, for college courses that they offer? And you have to remember, like Mr. Graff said, the colleges have really cranked up the requirements on high school teachers providing these, these classes. So the ones that are being looked at for this year's, the statistics course and a psychology course.
The weird thing is, when I look at these two colleges, I don't see statistics on either of them, as a course.
Yes, I, I cannot add which college-
Statistics is MAT one oh two slash two oh two.
Which college?
Niagara.
Oh yeah, Metro Dockory.
It was, AP wasn't, it wasn't a new step. Yeah, I think it was AP classes.
You mean the new ones that we're talking about, were AP?
Those ones are AP classes, yeah.
They're AP.
That's not what we have to talk about.
These are only two places that we can get college?
Well, we also have at least a few right now through Hilbert College.
Hilbert, awesome.
Yep.
Is there an easy way of knowing of these classes, what our current faculty is qualified or certified to teach?
I don't know.
Can I just bring up one concern about these classes, the new step and, you know, the college classes? Textbooks need to be purchased each year for these students. That is a huge drain on our typical budget. The um, college level courses.
The textbooks. I, I, I'm an adjunct, the adjunct professor, I am an adjunct, could I speak about those purposes? Um, at least for ECC, there are some requirements for becoming an adjunct professor, and being able to teach a high school class, Mrs. Rannerberg should speak to that also. You do, some of them, you do need professional degrees, you do have to go through an interview process, I'm sure new step is very similar. They do look for the same qualifications in a high school teacher that they would look for to hire as an adjunct professor to teach their college classes. I know Mrs. Rannerberg at one point was an adjunct graduate, for the textbooks. Just like a college, class textbooks do change frequently. I know her department has been sort of buckled with the textbooks that they've been using. But it is, it's just by taking a college class, so there is textbook requirements there. My daughter went into ECC with thirteen college credits, which did save us an entire semester of tuition. So those are just some of the things. If you have any questions about, you know, being an adjunct professor, being able to teach in the school, the high school, a college class, Joanne or I could both speak to you, you know, if you have a specific question on the process or, you know, the qualifications, you have to have a master's degree. If you teach accounting, you have to have an accounting background, you would teach um, an ECC course. I don't know if that helps, if there's any questions to answer.
Thank you.
Is it, are we allowed to, um, bring those courses charged for those textbooks?
That was my question, I don't know the answer.
Since we're charged to take the courses, I wonder if we need to charge them?
Yes, that's doable, I would say definitely do it.
It's still got to represent a cost savings compared to taking it at the college level.
Right.
I can look into seeing if we can target the textbooks.
Can you do that?
Because it's a good example of we offer some college levels, low courses. And often, to be able to do that partnership, they require the textbooks we provide. And then sometimes it changes into textbooks you're using. And we often have a ten-year plan, where we try to keep our textbooks for at least ten years before we purchase new ones, to try and kind of size our money, because it's very limited. So we're, if we are in a partnership and we're offering those courses and we replace those textbooks, they're also some of the most expensive textbooks. So, it's definitely something we want to add those courses, but we have to make sure that we don't always have enough textbook money to purchase the textbooks we need already. So, it's definitely something we have to make, so I can look into that.
That'd be great, thank you.
If you look at some of the high schools around us, there's kids coming out of high school, however, with thirty college credits. And some of our neighboring colleges are a high school. And it puts our students at a definite disadvantage when they're going into college, if they're not coming in with some experience. It's, it's definitely, you know, one of those things you have to balance, but um-
I know, that's why we made, because we made that one of our goals, to try and some of those courses if we can, so.
Couple of questions the board had last meeting. I believe it was Mrs. Henry, looking through the budget book, asked why in the past couple of years there had been twenty-five listed under home taught by parent, and then it jumped up to forty-five. We believe that the past couple of years it was listed as families home teaching, and last year it was listed as individual students.
Really?
So we believe it's, it's the same number, but it was listed in a, so it was just a reporting thing. Somebody requested a list, a look at the mandatory services, the non-mandated list, that's what it was, the non-mandated list, and looking at reducing the non-mandated list by at least ten percent, or at least having that as a figure. And Ms. Engrazi is working on a new improved version of the one we've used in the past. Correctness on that?
She said she had a list.
Let's see, we took care of that.
And a lot of things on the mandated list are going to be on the administrative list that we just shared with you.
Yeah, right.
Uh, we did that, we did that. There was a question about how many students were involved in a band, orchestra, chorus in fifth and sixth grade? Got your pencil ready? In uh, fifth grade, there's forty in band, eighteen in orchestra, seventy-eight in chorus. And so that's ninety, and it winds up being ninety total students, because some are in band and chorus, some are in orchestra and chorus. So that was forty band, eighteen orchestra, seventy-eight chorus, total of nine- So, that was 40 band, 18 orchestra, 78 chorus, total of 90 out of 114 students in the grade level.
Was that fifth and sixth grade?
That's fifth.
Just fifth?
Sixth grade, 24 in band, 19 in orchestra, 70 in chorus, a total of 80 unduplicated. So, again, there are band, chorus, or orchestra and chorus, and that's out of a class of 108.
What was the class of fifth total?
114.
Can you use those fifth numbers again real quick, my pencil wasn't ready?
40 in band, 18 in orchestra, 78 in chorus, 90 total participants out of 114 in the grade level.
Was this the beginning of the year, or the end of the year?
This was just the current number we did.
Right now.
I just asked Mrs. Winzenziak to do it, I can't really tell you where she got her numbers from. Probably from a program that she had produced for the fall concert or something.
If anybody wants to know, I think I have the numbers from last year.
You have the numbers on how many kids in each club from the budget book?
Do I have?
You have the budget book. You have the-
What page?
That was about pages 43 to 48. We already talked about the late bus runs. We talked about the requirements, state requirements for administrators. We are looking at the secretarial support in each, each, we haven't got much more than, keep looking at numbers.
Oh, no.
Because we only had two days since-
Yeah, you've done very well in two days.
Well, I haven't done anything else, but-
[laughing]
The people here would attest to that. We did have a meeting, I did have a meeting today with Ann McGuire from Bosie's about sharing Bosie's services.
Okay.
And we talked a little about sharing support for curriculum, and she indicated that there were a couple other local school districts, but at some point in time, those superintendents are going to need to get together to figure out exactly what it looks like, whether it's, whether it's a service they now have, or whether it would be a new service that they would have to then get permission from the state ed department to-
Oh, if Bosie's has a service now?
Yes, whether it's, yeah. We did also talk about something like sharing a financial officer service, and she gave me the name of a different person who handles that part of things.
Ann Bosie?
Yes. We have been looking into the possibility of having a course like lifeguarding count as a phys ed course, and it seems like at the moment, the only possibility is for a senior, for seniors, and that's only a possibility. We don't know if that would get a sufficient enrollment to make the course viable. Mr. Graff provided you with a side-by-side comparison of last year's course offerings, this year's course offerings, and the places where there's going to be reductions. We've been looking at the transportation policy in the board book to know what we got to do to change that, to make the deletion of 7th through 12th transportation in Hillbrook, East Pleasant, Weller subdivision possible. Mrs. Johnson already talked about the certification requirements, and that's it.
For band, do, did you look at the fourth grade?
I did not.
No?
I could-
Just curious to see what those numbers look like too, please.
Do you have any questions regarding those numbers? Do you look at the sixth grade? Do you have to remember that it'd be a moment of the, or school rehearsals, for band, so at the end of, 42 students, at the end of last year, it's down to 24, so.
Hmm.
First, sixth grade is 42 in last year.
Yeah.
At the end of, fifth grade had 32 students in it, and now this year-
It's 40, yeah.
It's 40.
40, hmm.
And I think that's all I got.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Thank you, they told you for getting so much time today, that was pretty-
Pretty impressive.
Anybody have any questions or anything else they'd like to talk about right now? Next meeting will be on March 18, I believe.
Monday, March 18.
You did correct.
Mrs.-
That's a regular board meeting right here.
That's right. Anybody else have anything they want to talk about, or questions?
I, I do have a question. We still have the FFAG.
Future Farmers of America?
Yeah.
And look in the, some of the time on those books, they have a lot of information.
They do have a lot of information. The reason why I'm asking is, I see the greenhouse working over there.
Any other questions, anything we want to talk about? Anybody like to speak for the 18th?
The next, the next 18th meeting is a full board meeting, normally.
The regular board meeting was budget.
Okay.
We do still have FFAG.
It's on page 45. 25 students.
And again, a reminder, on Monday, 7:00 PM, we'll be having an exception for the stands alone, so please, please attend as your schedule allows.
Can I just say something positive? I haven't heard anything the last few weeks here, and I, I've worked with these guys quite a bit, so that's definitely your business ministry, very important, private to me. Thank you.
Get to that, yeah.
Sure.
You're welcome.
Were there any definitive cuts tonight? Did I miss it, or is it still a work in progress?
I would still work in progress.
The only definitive was a reduction of a six-hour a day cleaner, or six-hour a week cleaner.
Thank you.
And the four and 5:00 PM run, I believe.
The 5:00 PM run.
5:00 PM bus run.
Not the 4:00.
And even though, I mean, this whole thing is way in flux, there's a lot to figure out here. We have a large gap to close. I mean, if you think about it, remember, it's a $2 million operating gap. We're just using our piggy bank to close that gap, for the most part, so it's a matter how much of the piggy bank we want to use, because that bank will run out in a couple of years. If you look at that schedule, a couple of years out, the, if it goes into the couple million dollar range, and there's nothing to pay for, it would mean drastic cuts across the board. $2 million in a district this size is just devastating.
I mean, this is, I mean, I maybe, I know you probably don't have the answer, but when that time comes, where we can't tax away out of it, because, you know, raise $2 million out of those communities, darn possible, it'd almost be a 60, 70% tax increase, would we declare insolvency, bankruptcy, or, I mean, how does that-
That's a possibility. There's been talk of districts-
We'll find out. There's districts that will probably be a little bit ahead of us, they'll, they'll, they'll fight those lawsuits first.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's where it heads, that's where it heads. Okay, you guys have anything else? Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.